Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee to order at 6:30 PM. Do notice having been posted. Let the record show that this meeting is being electronically recorded. And if anyone in the audience also wishes to electronically record this meeting, you should notify the committee at this time. Any such recording may be subject to reasonable restrictions imposed by the chair to the extent permitted under the open meeting law. Roll call? Mr. LaRabee?
Here.
Mr. Giliducci?
Here.
Mrs. Field?
Here.
Mr. Machado?
Here.
Mrs. Terra?
Here.
And the chair is present. Mrs. Gagbiardi is unable to be with us this evening due to a business commitment. We also have with us the Superintendent of Schools Jeffrey Schoonover, Director of Business and Finance Lindsay Albernaz, and our Director of Buildings and Grounds Carlos Campos, as well as our Recording Secretary Robin Bakara. I would ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next scheduled meeting will be Thursday, July 27, 2017, at 6:30 PM in the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School Library. The first item we have on the agenda is to welcome representatives of the David M. Morais Music Foundation. Who will be the spokesperson?
It's the president.
So if you could introduce yourself and the other folks that are here with you tonight.
My name's Mike Beto. I'm the president of the David Morais Music Foundation. This is Cathy Chedera, Eileen, Dave's mother, who is our mom.
Mama.
And that's Brad. Guess we're here to let you know that our bike ride is July 15 this year. It's at the Somerset Progressive Club. It's $20 per person. You don't need a motorcycle to attend. We'll have some entertainment, raffles, presentation of the two scholarship donations that we do every year. So those students will be coming with their parents to get their checks. And also, this year, we were approached to make a donation to the new trailer that the school is in need of. So we made the decision in lieu of instruments this year that we would donate the trailer to the school, which is already in process, but I don't think it's going to be ready till August. So I have some numbers here. I don't know if anyone's interested. Just basically, since 2010, which was the first year we were actually the foundation, the donation totaled basically $3,300. And then in 2011, it was only $2,000 because we weren't aware that the schools needed instruments, so we just did two scholarship donations that year. 2012, it was up to $6,900. 2013, we were up to $8,600. 2014, we were up to $9,600. In 2015, we were up to $13,000. And last year was our biggest year, which was $11,600. So since 2010, the total is $55,000 that we donated in instruments and scholarships every year since 2010. So it seems to be getting more and more popular. Obviously, the more money we raise, the more we can give back to the schools because that's what we're doing this for, in the memory of our friend Dave. And besides the instrument, we'll be donating a gift card to the elementary school so they can get some stuff that they need because we don't want them to feel left out. And there's one instrument, I think the middle school asked for, that we're going to give to them, but I think they must have caught wind that we were not donating instruments this year so that we could donate the trailer, which is $10,000. So if the school cannot do trailer, obviously, you can't take the instruments that we donated if you don't have the trailer that you need. So we'll be, I guess in August, the trailer will be ready, and that's our donation to the school for this year.
Well, that's fantastic. We really appreciate your support over the years, and it seems like it keeps growing. And I'm sure that the faculty and the students really appreciate all that you're doing for them. In addition to the scholarships that you're providing, you're making it possible with the instruments and the trailer for them to participate in so many different competitions and appearances, actually, up and down the East Coast at this point. So it's fantastic what your organization is doing. I know you're really very committed to the memory of Mr. Morais, and we know how much he loved music, and we really appreciate, really appreciate all you're doing. You had two additional members join you here, so...
Oh, it's not you. It's Randy, the board member, and Dolores is a board member, I believe. The other thing I've been doing this year is we've hunted down a couple of past scholarship recipients to come and speak at the bike ride, kind of give an update of where they are now. So I think we have two now, maybe three?
One of them said she would send a statement because she can't be there, and the other one said she would come, but I mailed them to all of them. Nine so far. Ten.
We have nine.
Ten.
Nine, you gotta mail it.
I only heard from two so far.
Yeah, obviously, with the short notice, not everybody can make it, but we thought it would be nice if we could get a couple of them and kind of give an update and let people say, hey, I remember that when they got the donation in 2011 or whatever it is. So that should be a little interesting to see.
There I am now.
Do you want to speak?
Sure.
David's mom.
Yes, I'm a grateful woman. I obviously had a wonderful son, and he inspired. Mike was the co-founder, and he formed the 501(c)(3). So it's pretty gratifying. But I wanted to say, I went to school in Somerset. I went to Somerset High. Mr. Caleb is president. My son also attended Somerset High, and his children as well, so my grandchildren. But I want to say, you have a student, Ethan Lozaro, he's on our board. And one of the things that I thought would be important was to have a lead song, because this is growing into perpetuated, and get the school involved, get the children involved. Mr. Marshall is fabulous. Iris Wonderful, they love us, and how that they know us. So just wanted to say thank you Somerset High, especially Ethan on that.
He's in the box.
He's passionate. He has other students engaged, so it's really a wonderful thing. So I just want to say proud mom and dad. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
One last thing I'd like to say, some of us attended the Sister Act musical.
Oh, yeah.
I was blown away by the performance, so I said at the last one that I did that we have a bunch of talented individuals or kids in this school, from the actors to the pit band to the props people. I never expected that on a high school level because I've never been to a musical before either, but I wanted to say that we got a lot of talent in Somerset. So thank you.
Yes, I think a lot of us saw the Sister Act performance, and it really was amazing how well the students did in that performance. It really appeared to be professional. A lot of talent, a lot of talent was on display during that performance. But we really, we really appreciate all you do for our music program. It's obviously been a very important part of our school for many, many years, and the financial assistance that you provide is really a tremendous benefit to the program because, as you know, it's getting harder and harder to provide all that we would like to provide to our students, and having groups like yours that support various programs, and particularly music, is just extremely gratifying to know that we have that kind of support out in the community and, you know, have a wonderful cause to work for as well. When during the day do you make your scholarship awards? Do you know? Is there...
What time do they get the checks?
I believe it's going to be around 3:15, 3 o'clock, 3:15. Because at 1:45, I think, is when the past scholarship recipients will be speaking. I don't know how many we're going to get, so it's going to be somewhere around 3, 3:15.
Okay. Good.
What time does the event begin?
It starts at noon time, runs till 6. That's at the Somerset Progressive Club on Seaver Avenue in Somerset. There's a tent outside, there'll be food. Four bands will be playing. One of the bands, we, our younger kids, I want to say they may be 17, 18. Mike Monty rents the hall and has a function over there with a bunch of bands, and we went and we saw it, and we were really amazed at this one band, so we're going to have them play this year to open up the event for us this year.
Great.
Well, in addition to the financial benefits that we have received, I'd also like to thank you for being such role models in the community by doing this and showing what our students mean by community service. It's one of the things that here at Somerset Berkeley that they need to complete in order to graduate, and to have role models like that in the community is extremely important. So thank you for doing that, and thank you for pulling in Ethan and empowering him to be a spokesperson for something like this. I think it's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would say to all of the people out in TV land that are watching our meetings, electrifying as they are, you've heard all the great things that the Morais Scholarship Foundation does for Somerset Berkeley Regional High School. So I encourage everybody who possibly can to turn out on July 15 to support this great event. Thank you very much.
I'd just want to thank Victor and give him his ticket, and thank him for his T-shirt sponsorship as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
We'll see you all there that day.
Be right in our front with us.
Before we go further, I would like to mention that we received sad news that the Massachusetts Commissioner of Education, Mitchell Chester, passed away. And in a statement from the president of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, he said, "Mitchell Chester was passionate and a committed advocate for excellence in the education of children. That Massachusetts Public Schools continue to lead the nation in student achievement is in no small measure the result of the dedication and focus of Commissioner Chester, who became a recognized leader in our state and the country. His contributions and his distinguished work will long be remembered by his colleagues in government and education." So I'd like for us to observe a moment of silence in memory of Mr. Chester. The next item that we have on the agenda is a citation for a retiree, Robert Valette. And the citation reads, "At a meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee on June 27, 2017, a citation was prepared, signed by members of the committee, and voted, inscribed in the impermanent records." Citation, "Whereas Robert W. Valette served as a custodian for the Somerset Public Schools and the Somerset Berkeley Regional School District for the past 20 and one-half years, and whereas he faithfully and conscientiously performed his duties on behalf of the students and staff at Somerset High School and Somerset Berkeley Regional High School, an individual with integrity and high standards who should be commended for the pride he showed in the schools. Whereas he fulfilled his duties with the utmost attention to detail and a steadfast commitment to excellence, earning the respect of colleagues and staff while always maintaining the highest standards of cleanliness. He had hereby resolved that the members of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee commend Robert W. Valette in the official minutes, according, recording this expression of appreciation and gratitude to an honored professional of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School District, and extending best wishes for good health and happiness in his retirement years." I would entertain a motion to adopt the citation.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Giliducci and seconded by Mr. LaRabee. Any discussion? In the absence of discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have a series of policy matters, so Mrs. Field, would you like to start?
Sure. So the Policy Subcommittee's met since our last meeting, and there's a number of policies that were reviewed by the Policy Subcommittee and are put forth for all of you for a first reading. The first one that we have is the Acceptable Use Policy Computer Care, Maintenance, and Support Agreement. This is to replace what we currently have for our Responsible Use Policy, which is why you don't see a red line for this one. This is a branding policy that we're reviewing. And in addition to the policy, there was also a Computer Care, Maintenance, and Support Agreement that students and parents would be responsible to sign, as well as Computer Care, Maintenance, and Support Agreement as well, that details what the requirements and what the obligations would be for both the students and the parents. I know that the committee received a copy of this. I will let Mrs. Albernaz or Mr. Schoonover speak directly if there's anything pointedly they'd like to point out within this policy, but then I thought we could also open it up for questions from the general group.
So this first policy, which says, "Lark, legal, appropriate, responsible, and kind," midway down the first page, this is the Acceptable Use and Internet Safety Policy. There are, just the principles here are, I think, fairly straightforward in just how we, what we expect our students to do with the power of the internet that we're providing them inside the school in terms of what's appropriate usage and responsible usage. So going through here, you can see some general principles regarding the use of both equipment, computers, the network, the internet within Somerset Berkeley. There are examples of inappropriate or unacceptable use on page two. And then there are a few questions here highlighted of, I'm not sure who, were those put in by the committees? The highlighting sections? I'm trying to recall if those are topics of discussion that we had after the policy review.
I'm not sure. Those are not going to, they were not in the filings.
I don't recall seeing that one previously.
That's what Julie submitted today.
Oh, so is that, is that going along with this memo? So, okay. So do you have, does everyone have a copy of a memo from Mrs. Gagbiardi? Okay, so she highlights three areas, numerates three things on this memo, and they must correspond to those three highlighted areas. I had not seen the highlighted areas previously.
I don't think that these three highlighted areas necessarily, I think she had some much more substantive comments about the policy.
So anyway, just stepping through, overlooking those highlighted areas right now, it's a fairly straightforward Internet Safety Policy, Acceptable Use Policy. Again, just highlighting areas of acceptable usage, what we consider proper usage by students, and then highlighting those inappropriate usages. And then there's, you know, an online agreement form that students and parents will complete. I think over the past year or so, we had been looking at various policies for either, whether you want to call it responsible use or acceptable use. And the policies, I think we're getting a bit large. We're trying to guess and cover every possible scenario regarding appropriate and inappropriate usage. And then we removed that from the table a few months back, and this policy just represents a more direct, cleaner version of acceptable usage.
Are there any specific questions from the committee on the Acceptable Responsible
When the Policy Subcommittee looked at these documents, the, there was a provision that the insurance was optional. Has that been changed?
Yes.
Okay, fine. I was looking for it. I didn't see it immediately, but...
So it's changed to mandatory?
Yes.
Can I ask if a parent doesn't pay for it? Because it says, because also on that thing, it says that if something happens to it, it would cost $250. Why is it mentioning that it will cost $250 to repair it? If it's mandatory, shouldn't even, why even say it? And I have to go back to the question, why I said if a parent doesn't pay?
That's a good point. Did we not remove the $250, Lindsay, when we made the change for mandatory insurance? That could have been a holdover.
No, I mean, I think it's just, it's informational as far as what a device actually costs to replace, just for, and we're not saying, you know, that, I think it's still valuable, my personal opinion, I think it's still valuable to keep in there as far as what a device actually costs, just like a textbook would if you lost a textbook.
But I was saying, well, we don't charge textbooks, we don't charge parents to pay for a textbook.
Yes, we do.
If they lose it, we do.
If they lose it, so my question goes back to why are we asking, why are we making it mandatory for a parent to pay for an insurance on a device, which, full disclosure, I think it's wise to pay the insurance. Full disclosure, but I'm just saying, I don't believe we can force a parent to pay $30 for an insurance that they don't want. And if so, it almost seems like we're in a situation with healthcare piece, but I'm just, I'm just looking at it, if I have a responsible child, which I feel is not going to, I'm just looking at it as, how do we tell a parent to pay $30, and if they don't, your child's not going to get a computer? Are we going to back, are we going to give them textbooks instead?
They would get a loaner. They would have to, they would get it at the beginning of the school day, have to return at the end of the school day.
So they just won't be able to bring it home?
Correct.
Yeah, they would check it in and out from here.
So that'd be written into the policy?
I think it needs to be in the policy that parents have to have, to know that they have an option.
And then...
I don't think it's...
...for homework. So let's say it's a child that doesn't have internet at home. You know, so before you could bring a book home, but now we're saying that we're doing the Chromebooks, and you didn't pay the 30. So is their homework going to be for kids that get loaners? Like, how are they going to be, so obviously, it could be a parent that can't afford the $30. So now they're going to be, oh, look, the other kid's a loaner. I mean, I just don't see, again, I think it should just be optional if a parent wants to do it. Books have been, over the years, $100, $200. We've known that. So we all know if that's damaged, it has to be replaced. So there really is no difference with the, with the device. We didn't, I mean, how many people, how many kids have we charged for books over the years?
Oh, many every year, at this time of the year.
Okay, so we never ask them to do insurance on it?
Oops.
So I think this dovetails... Are they going to get that money back at the end of the year?
I missed that.
Well, they're going to get the $30 back at the end of the year.
Absolutely not. It's an insurance policy.
So I think, I think this dovetails into Mrs. Gagbiardi's memo, which is, let's separate the role, it's hard to, but let's separate the rollout and the details of the rollout with the policy. So we have the Acceptable Use Policy, we have the Computer Care, Maintenance, and Support Agreement, where I think we lack some clarity around is the detailed plan for the rollout of the initiative and what this is going to look like for the students, for the parents, and for the teachers too. So I don't know if, how administration wants to manage this. How do we, is it helpful for you to have the policy? But I think there's some valid points as to what is the backup plan for parents who decide that they can't pay. Well, we have a plan if they can't pay.
Yeah, if they can't pay. I'm more concerned if they, some people may not, I'm just, again, full disclosure, I think it would be crazy not to pay the $30, just like I do with the instruments with my daughter. I just think it's...
But this is learning.
What's that?
This is learning.
Yeah.
And what's the unintended consequence if a child does not have access to the tools to learn?
Exactly. So that's the thing that I'm concerned, like, some parents may not want it, you know? If they don't want to pay this $30, we have a backup plan, but that backup plan is not here. We need to, full disclosure, we have to have full disclosure for everyone, where one or two parents may know that, oh, listen, my child can do the loaner, not because they can't afford it, because that's not the case, it's because we choose not to pay the $30. Looking at this, I see, listen, if you don't pay the $30, you could get the $250. When, I rented a trailer, that's today, I mean, Sunday, at U-Haul. I waived the $8. That's my point. You should have that right to waive something, where there's nothing in here that says you can waive.
Because the intention is to encourage every parent to do the smart thing and buy insurance for $30 so they're not exposed to paying $250. I think the solution is simple. The vast majority of students are going to pay $30 for your insurance. There are going to be some students who legitimately can't pay the $30, and the fee for them will be waived. That's configured into the cost of the program. will be waived, that's configured into the cost of the program. And for those who do not, refuse to purchase the insurance, they will resign a receipt that says, in the event that the doctor, the computer is damaged, they're responsible for $250.
But that policy doesn't say that.
Well, we will...
So can we change the policy?
In the second reading, in the second reading, we'll put that provision in.
Okay. That's all, listen, I agree with you. I think it's crazy not to pay the $30, but we have to make it full disclosure. That's, that's my whole thing.
Well, add that in.
And I do think there's a valid point, though, about the loner. I think we need to have more dialogue with the administration on the plan on that. I am concerned if we're not allowing a child to take home a Chromebook, and the teachers are assuming that kids are going to have access to that. I just want to be clear that there hasn't been any unintended consequences for a child that's not allowed to take home a Chromebook, and will that put them behind the eight ball in any way when it comes to homework?
Well, we actually had this discussion in the Policy Subcommittee, and I agree, because we're only going to have a certain number of loners, and so I really don't think that's a practical solution. I think the solution is that for those that can't afford it, there'll be a waiver. For those who can and refuse to purchase the insurance, they'll have to sign a release saying that they're going to pay $250 if their child damages the computer. I, you know, once again, I think it would be unwise, let's face it. Go out to lunch and spend $30, so...
Well, Mr. Piers, I hear your point. The thing is, parents haven't paid for damaged books. In all these years, we haven't charged students and parents for learning tools. So now we're charging.
Yes, we are.
But either way, it's the same thing. So if a kid damages three books, that's $300, I bought a hundred and some dollars worth.
That's a Columbia, I think.
That's more than a Chromebook. So, I mean, again, as the option of a waiver, if a parent wants to pay that, they would have to pay that. But I don't like the loner program and kind of pointing out kids that are not paying this mandatory insurance, just like we offer the insurance for sports. And how many parents sign up for that extra, you know, blanket of insurance? We don't make it mandatory, if you're going to do a sport, you have to do that insurance policy. So why is this any different than either for school books, or athletics, or any of them?
No, I think what Mr. Pierce is saying is that, are you, if someone waives their rights for the loner, I mean, for the, they're not allowed to take the computer home?
No, I said they'll sign a receipt that they're going to pay $250 if their child damages the computer.
Because I think the loner should only be used for someone who accidentally forgets their bookbag at home, or something like that.
I think the loner program was really designed when a Chromebook needs to be repaired. You take it to the help desk, and it may be necessary for them to have it for a day or two, so they're going to give you a loner in the meantime. And I do agree that it's an issue that a student would not be able to take at home if they need it to do homework, et cetera. So I think we can, we can address it, we can encourage parents to purchase the insurance, and if they don't, they'll know that they're on the hook for $250. All we can do is do our best to implement the program. I suppose you might get a parent who says, I'm not buying the insurance, and I'm not signing a release that I'm responsible for $250. At that point, we'll have to figure out what we're going to do, because obviously, particularly if it's not a matter of affordability, then I would say they're really not acting in the best interest of their child, but that's just my perspective.
And I just, just want to add that this year, last year, almost every single one of our teachers, if not all of them, assigned, had many assignments that required online access at home. You know, whether they have a textbook for the course or not, there was that online requirement outside of school. We weren't handing students devices, and we talked about this at that last policy meeting, and Mr. Wanziski said that he has never received a single complaint that someone was not able to access the material or complete the assignment outside of school. So I think every single one of our students has had those requirements with no complaints. So I think that, you know, I know it's a concern of ours to say, you know, what happens if we, if they don't have that device? But we already are requiring kids to do that outside of school, and we are not hearing that, you know, there are any problems with that.
And in the absence of a Chromebook, students could still access the same one through another internet-enabled device, correct?
They know how to do it. Okay, so I think Mrs. Gagliardi really wanted to be here. I'm not going to read her entire memo, everyone has it, but I think I would just touch on the three issues that she raised. One is that it really doesn't address the use of cell phones during the school day, and there had been indications that if each student had their own individual device, the use of cell phones during the school day would be unnecessary. So she's asking that that issue be addressed. She's also raising an issue with regard to professional development, and asking for a clear professional development plan for the faculty to implement this program. And she's also asking for a rollout plan for the program that establishes exactly how we're going to do this, when it's going to be implemented, and how it's going to be implemented, to be sure that we're really ready to go at the point when the program will be introduced. She's also looking for measurable standards as to the impact that this program has, and she indicates that she would have difficulty supporting the program on second reading if these issues are not addressed.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Because she actually mentions that she wouldn't be able to support, could we add her email to our official minutes, because...
Well, yeah, it'll be part of it.
That will be part of it, thank you.
Since it was circulated to everyone, it'll be part of the minutes, thanks.
If I can ask a question regarding her number three, detailed plan for the rollout. We did have a detailed plan in place, but because of our delayed purchase of the devices, that is now not happening. So we can't, we can't guarantee that this is going to happen in the summer as we had originally planned. We simply don't know yet. You know, because if it happens during the summer, it'll look differently than if it happens in the middle of September, if, during several evenings. We could still give some of the details, but it won't be as specific, just not knowing when it's going to happen.
Well, she does address that issue. She says, while I understand that the actual rollout may be impacted by the timing of the Berkeley Proposition Two and a Half vote, we should have at least a tentative detailed plan for the rollout with alternative provisions in the case that the ordering and receipt of the devices is delayed. I know there's been discussion about it, but I don't believe that we've seen actually a written plan as to how this program will be implemented. And I think that's what she's asking for.
As part of the policy, or as a standalone document?
She says, she says here, while a detailed rollout plan should not necessarily be part of the acceptable use policy, I would hesitate to approve any policy centered on one-on-one devices until we were all assured that adequate implementation plans were in place. It may be that the administration already has that in place, and if so, they should be shared with the committee in the very near future. Any other comments? All right, so I, then I will entertain a motion to accept the acceptable use policy for first reading, and it will be on the agenda of our next meeting.
Second?
Motion made by Mr. Larabee and seconded by Mr. Giliducci. Any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, all is in favor. I oppose. Did everyone vote in affirmative?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, it's unanimous. So, Mrs. Field?
So the next policy that you have for views, the athletic and extracurricular, views your fee policy. You can see there that we have added language regarding extracurricular events as well, such as DECA, marching band, and show choir. These, just for clarification, are activities that have currently had user fees attached to them, and that will continue to be the case. And then the athletic fees will pertain to athletics. There will be further review of other activities as we move forward. Before this year, we're starting with the extracurricular activities that are currently collecting user fees and have in the past. You'll see there that there is caps that have been developed. There is also payment terms. One change since the last time we met, and this is more because of a process change, but is worth noting to the committee, there was dialogue about when payments were going, the timing of payments for extracurricular, extracurricular activities and sports. It was explained that due to the process, we will be collecting fees at the time of registration, and then if someone does not make the team, they will be refunded through the, you're shaking your head.
Go ahead, finish.
So because of the way the program works with Family ID in my school box, there was going to be payments collected at the time of registration. If a student did not make the team, then that would be refunded back to the parent through the, through the various, through the various channels. Also, too, there's language about the waivers, and that, so there's language about how that can be waived if a student, if there's a financial hardship with the user fee. That's outlined in the, in the policy as well. And then there's also some other language regarding refunds, as well as miscellaneous. And it's also important to note that it is spelled out in the policy that payment of user fees does not automatically assume playtime.
So, I was sort of scowling, because my recollection of our Policy Subcommittee was that we discussed this issue, and I thought at least Mr. Larabee and I were in agreement that we had made a public commitment that we would not charge the user fee until the student had actually made the team. And I know that Mrs. Albinaz had strong reservations about that, because it is much more difficult administratively for her to deal with. But we felt since those questions had been raised, and we had made a commitment, that we would not charge the user fee until the student had actually made the team. And as we understand it, there are only a limited number of teams where there are actually cuts that are made, generally. Men's basketball is one such sport. Baseball possibly could be, I guess soccer is another sport where there are often significant number of cuts, but it's quite limited. So, I guess the full committee can make the decision, but I was, I was concerned that we had said that we weren't going to be charging these fees until the students actually made the team.
Yep, just for clarification, at the Policy Subcommittee, we had that dialogue. I don't know if Mrs. Albinaz wants to talk about what that will mean to the collection process, and then we would open it up to the committee to discuss.
Family ID and my school box have merged. So my school box, if you're familiar with it, is the software that collects school lunch payments currently. So Family ID, what the system is currently, is a student will go on, register for a sport for tryouts, go through the proper steps, and then the final roster gets sent to the athletic advisor for tryout purposes. We are looking to streamline the process as far as collecting user fees. So when a, when a student registers, Family ID requires payment. There's no wiggle room on that for the next, until the next six weeks. Once six weeks is up, they're in an integration period. Once the six weeks is up, there is no option to pay after, unless we decide to not finalize registration and do it a different way. What my office was trying to do is come up with ways to not have to chase students for payment and use technology to its fullest, so that we can actually collect and then issue refunds for students that do not make the team. I do still believe that this is the most efficient way to handle this, as well as our athletic director. He recommends doing it this way as well. It is up to the school committee to decide how you want to do it. But if we do move forward for this season, I will always come back to you and say, this is an issue, this is a laborious step in whatever we're doing, it takes a lot of time, and I do believe we should be doing it upon the date of registration. Those make it easier.
Lindsay, can you clarify for the committee what that will mean if we don't charge at the point of registration? Can you just walk us through what that means?
So for the next five weeks, Family ID and my school box are merging together. What that looks like after the five weeks is up, it's five or six weeks, the student is not technically registered. Right now, they can register and be registered, and then pay afterwards for the next five weeks. What they're trying to do is go through a process of registration time into payment, so registration is not finalized until payment is collected. That will happen before the start of the school year. And that's the way that...
So it would be a two-step process? The athletes for the fall would have to register now for the fall? And then go back in and pay?
Yes, obviously, we would recommend them doing it at the same time. But the way Family ID is going to be set up is that you don't have an option for the winter or spring sports.
Right, so that was a point of clarification, too, for the committee to consider. It's not as if you can shut off the pay at registration just for a particular sport. It's either all or nothing at that point.
Unfortunately, it is a limitation of the convergence of the two softwares.
Quick question. So if, let's say in the fall, everyone signs up, it's $250 for the first?
$150.
$150, and the second?
$100.
$100, will the system know that the child already played in one sport?
Well, we will configure it so that it's an option, a selection, yep.
Lindsay, how many athletes are you talking about for the fall sports? How many registrations do we have coming in the fall?
I'm going to say it was close to like $450, $450-ish. It really doesn't matter. It's just the difference of the business office emailing parents, chasing the funds, the athletic director having to get involved, have coaches get involved, and we just wanted to avoid that, and then issue refunds if a student did not make the team electronically. So, just looking for streamlined process, that's all.
Is this something we can change mid-year? Can we do it for a season? And if it's laborious for the first season, when we switch over to winter, we can then ask for payment at registration?
I will be requesting, if we change it, I will be requesting that we do registration with payment upon registration. It will be laborious, it will be. I mean, 450 students, it's going to be, it's going to be manual labor trying to figure that out, which is fine. I mean, we can do it for the fall sports, but it's, it's not something that you can just shut off with Family ID, like you said, it's all or nothing after this goes live.
How many fall sports cut, soccer?
Just soccer that I'm aware of.
And this is the first time it's being done, so are there, you know, you're reporting on how successful it is, and where you can see improvement, or it's working fine? Since it's the first time you're going to be doing it, I mean, we haven't had it before, so it's a new thing.
You know, obviously, they all know where I stand with user fees, but for me, I just think it makes more sense to pay at registration. It's the same thing like when you, Little League, when you sign up your child, you have to send in a check. I just don't see, I don't see the benefits of collecting the money after they make the team, when we only have a few sports that, that there are cuts. That's just my...
I'm pretty sure this information was shared, I just don't remember it off the top of my head. How many students tried out for soccer, and how many made the team last year, roughly? Does it have to be?
I'm looking at the numbers here. We had 41 girls participating in soccer, we had 42 boys, but I don't know the number of students who tried out.
If I remember, it wasn't a dramatically different number. It was maybe 50 or 60, if I remember correctly.
It's somewhere in that ballpark.
I think it's, I think it's a significant number.
Much higher than that?
Well, those numbers reflect more than one team, correct? We have...
Barcelin JV.
Yeah, so the 40 is really two teams of 20. And I think because of the Somerset-Swansie... And I think because of the Somerset Swansea Soccer League and a lot of interest in soccer, the turnout, tryouts have pretty, pretty high participation. And you say that the athletic director favors this process?
He does.
Because one of the, one of the concerns that I had in requiring students to pay the fee upfront for, for sports where there's the possibility of being cut from the team, and in some cases, students may recognize a pretty good chance that they might be cut. It might impact on participation if they have to pay upfront, knowing that they have to try out for the team. And I don't want to do anything that we can avoid to discourage participation.
Well, it is already happening with football, so I already know 10 boys that are not doing it this year because it would be, and because they don't think they're going to make the team, so you get minus 10 from your foster.
Does football cut too?
No.
No, they do. Barcelin.
Do they move down to JV if they don't make Barcelin?
Yes.
I, I disagree. I think the discourage part about, I'm going to pay, if you don't feel like you're going to make the team and that user fee is the discourage piece to try and out, I hate to say it's not, it's the user fee that's not working. Not because, you know, if you really want to be on the team, you'll pay the fee and see if you can try out. But I disagree with Mr. Pierce saying that paying upfront may discourage kids from playing. I think the user fee total may discourage the kids. Because either way, if you make the team, you're still going to pay for it. So signing up for a team, you're making that investment that you're going to pay or else you're not going to be on the team anyways. So I, I don't see, to me, this is what I'm looking at. The reason why this committee instituted user fees is because of cost. If now we're going to ask our administration to handle a task of collecting payment, and if, might as well just add another head count. Might as well just add someone else, that's going to be their job for the first month, collecting money for every sport. And I think now it's going to contradict because our administration is going, or our administration will be spending time collecting like a bill collector. I just don't see the need. Just charge it upfront. If they make the team, great. If they don't make the team, they get refunded. As long as they get refunded, it doesn't go into their lunch fund or anything like that. As long as they actually get that funds back into whatever method they paid for it, I think that's great enough. Now, the only other thing is if they do pay online, when they register, is there a service fee? And if there is, is there an option where they can write out a check? Because I know when you put money in your account, you pay a dollar 95. Ever since I realized that, I now write out a check to the school. Why pay a dollar 95 per system? So that's the only thing that I would have to ask. Parents shouldn't be mandated if they can write out a check to the school instead, but if you're going to be forcing them to hit pay, now they're paying that $150 plus the service fee as well.
There is a service fee of collections, but the district's picking that up, so the parents would not be.
So the parents wouldn't be paying for it.
Right.
So that's, so again, there's really, there's no downside of parents paying ahead of time. In my eyes.
Right.
I'm assuming that we have data from last year as far as the number of kids that tried out for the football team and the soccer team and things of that nature. And we'll be able to compare that data with this year's data, being the first year we have user fees, in order to try to determine if there's any appreciable loss of participation, correct?
I don't think our coaches, we asked this question, that they kept, you know, the numbers, records of the total number of kids who originally tried out. What we have are just the rosters, but we don't have that information. And again, I think you all.
You should, you might have in Family ID. Possibly.
That's, okay.
Yeah, possibly.
They have to register to try out, so.
Yeah, maybe.
But again, the only two sports that had any cuts this past year were soccer and basketball. The only two. So we could, we can look at that.
I'm just going to go back to one more thing about the whole payment upfront. More students make the team than don't make the team. So that alone, you have to go with percentages, you know? So to me, I think we should be in favor of paying at registration, just because of that number alone.
Well, this needs to go to the second reading, correct?
Yes.
We can take it back to the, to the subcommittee and continue this discussion and determine if we want to change it. Because again, as Mr. Pierce had indicated, you know, my issue with it is only because we made such a statement, we made that statement a number of times that we would not be charging upfront. That was really my main concern. I understand your rationale makes perfect sense, but since we made that declaration a number of times, it's just to go back on that in the first year of implementation is undesirable in my opinion.
So from my perspective, I'll reluctantly support this as the first reading. I want to hear from the athletic director that he, this is not a concern of his because I do not want to hear later him telling us that the fact that these people had to pay upfront was a factor, so.
Will any else please? What would you want to say personally?
Is he here?
Is he here?
Third December, five days.
He'll be here in August, in our next meeting in July, I'm not sure.
What about, is he, is he on the same schedule as content coordinators where he's going to be here for the next week or so?
He's here this week, yes.
All right, well, yeah, ask him to, you know, inform, inform us on this issue.
Let's use our extended.
Okay, good. All right, so I will entertain a motion to approve the athletic and extracurricular fee policy for first reading.
So moved?
Seconded.
Motion made by Mrs. Field, seconded by Mr. Larrabee. Is there any further discussion? Yes, further discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All right, we have four in the affirmative and two in the negative. Mr. Machado and Mrs. Terror voted in the negative. All right, Mrs. Field, next.
Okay, so the next policy for review is the sports-related concussion management policy. High-level changes. This policy now includes extracurricular activities and music. You all received a red line, so you can see specifically what the changes are. Most of them were referencing mass, most of the additions is references to Mass General Law, which you can see there. There was also some clarification on wording. There was also just some cleaning up of the titles that we used, for example, athletic trainer, director. Again, you can see as you go down there, there's the inclusion of bands and director of choirs, so they will be covered now and the students as well in the concussion policy. There was also some information added regarding online training. We put the online training links directly in the policy so that that would be accessible for parents and for students. And there was also further language put in about the pre-participation form and specifically participating in the development and by annual review of the policies and procedures. The athletic director did join us at our last policy subcommittee meeting to walk through these, and that is something that he highlighted in his presentation, which is the director of athletics shall also be responsible for participating in the development and by annual review of the policies and procedures. So that will continue, or I should say that will start from here on out. There was language removed, that was duplicate language that had been in the earlier policy, and so that was streamlined. Let's see here, I'm just trying to highlight some of the more important changes. Again, a lot of it was just cleanup from language that had been in the old policy. There was also, just to highlight, there was also the removal of the word guardian. Parent as defined in the policy encompasses both parent and guardian, so that, so where you see that, know that it's not taking away anything from the guardian, it's just that parent as described and defined in the policy is to be for, for both parents and guardians. So I open it up, well, unless Superintendent Schoonover or Mrs. Albinaz have anything to add, I open it up for any questions.
I thought the athletic director did a very good job in updating the concussion policy. I really don't think there's anything controversial here. It's all designed to bring us into compliance with state law and E E S E regulations, and I think it does a very good job in protecting our students who are engaged in not only athletics but other extracurricular activities who might suffer a concussion. Any other thoughts? All right, if there are any other thoughts, I'll entertain a motion to approve the extra, sports-related extracurricular activities concussion management policy and procedures for first reading.
So moved?
Seconded.
Motion made by Mrs. Field and seconded by Mr. Giliducci. Any further discussion? Yes, if there's further discussion, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Inex. Mrs. Field?
Okay, so the next policy review is the attendance and extracurricular policy. By way of background, this conversation started at our last, at our last policy meet, school committee meeting. It was included in the changes for the handbook. Upon further review and at the recommendation of Superintendent Schoonover, this is a policy that is a standalone policy that the school committee had reviewed and approved last year or the year before. So the way that the policy subcommittee managed this one is we took it out of the wording of the handbook and looked strictly at the attendance policy because there were some recommended changes from the administration based on what we had implemented last year. So you all received a red line of the current full attendance extracurricular policy. This is a bit more lengthy than what is shown in the handbook. Before I jump into some of the changes that were recommended for the attendance policy going forward, it was noted at our policy subcommittee that any language that's changed in the full policy will be correctly reflected in the handbook. So I just bring that up because there is, there was a, there was a discussion about policies in the handbook versus actual policies. And there's an understanding with Superintendent Schoonover and Principal Lansinsky that any changes the school committee makes to policy needs to be reflected correctly in the handbook, whether it's a truncated version of that policy or any language pertaining to it. It must capture that spirit. So again, you all have a red line version of the attendance policy. Changes recommended by administration were done so because we were in the first year of implementation of a, of a stricter attendance policy, so these changes are based on feedback of implementation. And Superintendent Schoonover, please keep me honest on this and let me know if there's, if there's a place where you need to jump in. One of the biggest changes or recommendations for change to the attendance policy is the school tardiness issue. That was something that was, according to administration, a challenge to manage. So there had been changes to that, which you can see in the red line there. There's also an outline for the progressive discipline outline, which shows instead of, it shows first and fourth offense processed by the attendance office and no penalty and so forth and so on. Any student who arrives after first block without documentation stated above will be assigned a one-day Saturday school. And then what was also broken out was the difference between class tardiness and class truancy. And again, you can see there that there is the discipline outline listed as well. Superintendent Schoonover, is there anything specifically that you want to add on this?
No, besides that, did you reference the college visits?
I did not.
Okay, so really, the only, as Mrs. Field said, the biggest change was with tardiness. That was certainly something this year that we had the most concern about from students and families. And I think this, the recommended changes here are a nice step going forward. And then obviously, each year, we will, and I know the, the administration here, along with, also with the school council, they will review this information and see if any future changes are needed. I think this is a good step. I was just going to point to the top of the second page where it's college visits. We certainly don't want to deter students from going on college visits. Last, this past year, we had a total of three college visits for excused absences. It's increasing, or the recommendations to increase it to four per year, two per term.
Mrs. Schoonover?
Yes.
Are these changes the recommendations that the principal recommended at the last meeting?
Yes.
I just have one question. We discussed a K eight of your absence about notifying parents, and I kind of disagree with the three days to notify if someone is absent. If someone is absent, I think it should be notified the same day. And that's on the first page. And my concern is for safety, and I know high school students can drive, and maybe the safety factor might not be as relevant as it might be a K eight, but I think parents still should be notified the same day a student is absent. I had one, one of my children went to Diamond, and we got a call from Mr. Bentley, whenever. He got that one call, me three or four times a day about lots of things, and we felt very connected and informed. And I think it might just be simply a little, kind of a robo-call or something.
Where, where are you looking? First page under D, absences, bullet number one.
And it was changed on a K eight that they would be notified the same day, and I like to keep that consistent with the high school as well.
Well, that's not a proposed change. The existing policy provides for three days to provide notice. And so you're, you're asking us to make that change without any input from the principal? I, I think.
I think it's reasonable. If your child's absent, a parent should know. I think that's reasonable. I mean, I'm fine with it going back to him and him reviewing it. I had just thought that since we discussed a K eight, I, I kind of thought maybe I already passed through your views, to Schoonover, so I just looked at it today, and so I apologize for not sending that email up to you to speak with him.
We did, last week, what was last week? We had our, yes, Thursday night, arcade meeting. We, we are exploring using Aspen and our One Call Now system to work together to send out an automatic call to the parents of any student who is absent. So while we hope to do that this coming year, schools that I've talked to when I was in a school that used to do this, there are those problems where someone may, a teacher may mistakenly mark someone absent because when attendance was taken, the child was in the bathroom or sitting, not sitting in the right seat, and, you know, mistakes like that are made, and then all of a sudden, the parents get a parent phone call saying, your child is not here, and then the panic, you know, sets in to find out that the child was in school. So we, we need to certainly make sure that we have a very, very tight attendance policy or, you know, just notifying what's, what's going into Aspen before that call goes out. But we are exploring that because I, I agree with Mrs. Terror. As a parent, if my child doesn't arrive to school, and I think that he or she went, I would want to know that they're not there. If I, if I fail to, to make. would want to know that they're not there if I, if I fail to, to make that call myself. But I will speak with Mr. Lanzinski and have that for the next meeting.
I think going back to what Mrs. Terra said, a K eight, if something horrific happens to a child who's waiting for a bus or anything, whenever someone, it's a missing person or anything, that goes very first few hours are the most crucial hours for Lauren Faunt, Lauren Faustman. So I think she made it clear at that meeting. So I think you need to, if you could share that with Mr. Lanzinski, that God forbid if something ever happens like that, we don't want to waste six hours to find out that, and maybe longer because parent may think that they had after school practice or something like that. So, and I think as a father, if my child's not in school, like you mentioned, you, if we didn't make that call, we need to know why, you know? And it may be already a practice that they're doing anyhow. They may be calling parents already one day within that same day. It's just somehow that language got there and no one ever picked it up.
How many, how many, do you know on average, how many students are absent in a given day?
It's about 5% of those students, so 50 or so. I'd say 50 to 75 students on average.
I was going to say automating that process would be huge. So if we're working towards that, I think that that's helpful.
Well, why don't we, why don't we notify Mr. Lanzinski of the concern with respect to that? The three day notice provision and get his response. You know, and make him aware that there's the, you know, the possibility that there'll be a motion to change that and let us know.
The notification could be an email, correct? Wouldn't necessarily need to be a phone call because an email would be a much more easily automated process.
Yes. An email can go directly from Aspen.
Right.
If it's a phone call, it would, Aspen, I mean, which is also not a difficult process. Aspen can do it directly with One Call Now.
Which do you think is more efficient?
Email is more efficient. Phone calls are more direct. Like usually, I mean, just, I'm sure everyone here probably receives 100 emails a day, if not more than that. So sometimes emails get lost.
But an email creates a permanent record though.
It does.
Yeah, I think you look at Diamond, who's been doing it for years. And I know some strongly communities, they say, I get a call like at 10 o'clock religiously if my kid is absent. So I mean, other school systems are doing it. I, I'm sure they're doing it with whatever systems working best. Maybe can we test it? Again, I just think safety is paramount.
Could you also find out that 5% that are absent daily, how many of those 5% on an average that someone calls a school? I'm just curious how many students or parents don't make that first phone call, just out of curiosity. And I don't know if the system would be a smart system that would, like if you did call, you don't get that phone call anyhow. You should, I still think something should be sent out, either a call, email, anything. But even if you do call, I think something, unless it is a smart system where, and you know what? You, you will have those issues where a home teacher will accidentally make a mistake. But I have a feeling once they do it once, they probably won't do it a second time because I'm sure that parent will be knocking at someone's door. And everyone is, it's, we're all humans, but I'd rather be on the safe side than on the sorry side.
When we were in the subcommittee, and I, forgive me, I don't remember the answer to this question, so I'm going to ask it, ask it again. We have a definition of tardiness, but we don't have a definition of truancy. And I, I thought maybe it was someplace else if I'm remembering correctly, but it's not So under E, we define tardiness, but under F, we just say what the penalties are for truancy.
You're right. It needs to be added. You missed that one during all these changes I didn't make. I can add it in the second reading?
Thank you.
So if there are no further comments, I entertain a motion to approve the plan for first reading with the understanding that we don't have input from the principal regarding the one and the addition of a definition of truancy if it doesn't appear anywhere else and may absentee in the attendance policy.
So both.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Machado, seconded by Mr. Larabee. Any further discussion? An absence of discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous.
Okay, the next policy is the out of school suspension policy. I'll turn this over to my fellow policy subcommittee members as I don't recall specific dialogue at our last meeting on this. Or we could jump to student handbook changes. I know that there's.
Do you want to take it?
No, I believe that the, that those changes are simply almost totally eliminating specific penalties for various types of misconduct.
So let's jump right into the student handbook because I think that's where they're captured. Mr. Pierce, what you might be referring to, okay. All right. So you all received handbook modifications at our last meeting. Since then, the policy subcommittee went back, Principal Lanzinski was at our last policy subcommittee meeting to walk us through the handbook changes. As I mentioned earlier, we, we took out the attendance policy and looked at that independently. So that will go back into the handbook changes, handbook changes based on what this committee agrees upon during the second reading of the attendance policy. That will be reflected in the handbook. You also have a revised handbook changes that there was a bullying policy that was put into the handbook changes originally from the last time we met. We have since taken them out of the handbook changes right now. That will be a policy that needs to be reviewed independently as well. So right now, there are no proposed handbook changes to the bullying policy until the policy subcommittee has a chance to make a recommendation on changes and understand those changes going forward. But if we're looking at the handbook changes, if we look after the bus regulations, there is section two, out of school suspensions. Mr. Pierce is referring to the changes to that in that there's a recommendation to take out the specific discipline actions for the various out of school suspensions. So I didn't know, Mr. Pierce, if there was anything that you wanted to add on that for, for dialogue?
No.
Or discussion?
Not with respect to those, that's specific section.
Okay. Then there are just some minor changes. The medical assessment drug policy, there was language there added for transparency. And then there were just some other minor changes to National Honor Society, the Library Media Center, athletics going on vacation during athletic season, and booster club athletic award jackets.
Yeah, I would only comment, my, my comments sort of fell on deaf ears, so I'll just repeat them publicly. And I, the National Honor Society section puzzles me because there's a long enumeration of what a student has to do to remain in the National Honor Society once selected. But the same level of detail is not provided as to how you initially qualify. And there are some requirements that are not included here. And I really didn't find the explanation as to why they're not there satisfactory, but On the bus regulations, there was a, there's a provision in, in the last year's handbook that numerates these bus regulations. They're pretty consistent with the rules that this committee adopted, but they're not exactly the same. So the proposal was just to eliminate what is in the previous year's handbook and put in the rules for student riding school buses that this committee adopted. So to make it totally consistent with what, what our policy is. So are there any other questions or comments? All right. In that event, I will entertain a motion to approve these handbook modifications for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Field and seconded by Mr. Giliducci. Any further discussion? An absence of discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that covers those policy changes.
Mr. Pierce, may I ask, just for clarification on that, the agenda doesn't say first reading. So was that, with the handbook changes, was that a first read or was that approval? Because usually approval, I mean, in the past, handbooks are just a one vote. It's not like a policy where it's a two read approval process. I just want to, I know you said first reading. I just want to clarify.
The reason, the reason I said first reading is because some of these changes to the handbook involve policies that clearly statutorily were required to approve.
I follow, yes.
So the next item we have on the agenda is a staffing update.
I just want to share with you, just, I mean, you have this listing in front of you, so I don't need to go over. But I just wanted to make the committee aware of just where we are with staffing, some of the positions that were vacated at the end of the school year, either due to retirements, resignations from various positions, or, or other changes that were, that were made either due to programmatic changes or budgetary requirements. So you have the listing of those who have retired. And I believe that at this point, the committee has provided citations for those three employees. But in the, the middle part of that list, where we have nine positions that are currently or nine positions that are changing, just so you can see by position, I didn't list any individual names, but positions and the reasons why those positions were vacated. We have recently filled the position and it's Emily Faris, who is the music teacher. She is, this is the position that was vacated in the middle of last year by Audra Aruda, who was the shared music teacher between Somerset Berkeley and Somerset Public Schools. So Emily will be, and Emily has been filling in as a long-term sub for really the second half of the school year. She will have that point two strings position where she starts her days here at the high school and then she proceeds to, to be a general music and instrumental teacher in, for Somerset Public Schools. And then we do have that new, one new teaching position, special education, that has not been posted yet, where as with a few other things on this list, we're waiting for our budget to be approved before any official postings are made. In fact, we, what, honestly, I, I think what I intend to do is to, to post these shortly as anticipated vacancies so we can at least get the ball rolling on them and not waiting until the middle of July to, to actually get the postings out, but to announce them as anticipated vacancies.
I know the kids really love that.
They do.
Let me just raise an issue that's related since these, some of these positions refer to being contingent on final approval of the budget. We, just, just to outline the process, everyone's probably familiar with it, but the Berkeley town meeting was on June 5th. The, our budget was approved condition upon the passage of a proposition two and a half override by state law. They couldn't schedule that override election in less than 35 days. They scheduled it for July 15th, which is 10 days beyond the 30 day period that we have to resubmit the budget to the two members of the regional school district. There is a provision in the regulations that say that we can apply for an extension of the 30 day period. We have applied for that extension to the commissioner of education. Have we had a response to our letter?
They've accepted it.
Okay. So, so the timeframe within which we can resubmit the budget has been extended by 15 days, which means that we have, if the proposition two and a half override were not to pass in Berkeley, we would only have a short period of time to resubmit the budget to both Berkeley and Somerset. In all likelihood, Somerset would not call a special town meeting to approve the budget again, because it's already been approved, but Berkeley would have to do that presumably. So I'm raising this because it may be necessary for us to meet the week after July 15th, should it be necessary for us to reconsider the budget and resubmit it to Berkeley. So I'm going to ask Robin to send out a dual poll to try to identify a date during that week, which we will set as a tentative meeting date in the event that the proposition two and a half override does not pass in Berkeley. We're very optimistic that it will, but I think we need to be prepared in view of the fact that there are clear regulations as to the timeframe within which we have to resubmit the budget. So I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts about that, but I would just like us to be forewarned and forearmed that we may, we may need to have a meeting that week. It will be something we'll have to prepare for because as I understand it, Mrs. Alvernas may be away that week. So. So let's just. So it's just, an FYI.
Since Lucy may be away that week, would it be sensible to have a budget subcommittee meeting prior to the 15th? Just to have a backup contingency budget? Or at least a discussion?
I think probably yes.
Another dual poll?
Yes. We'll squeeze it in between the 4th of July and your community forums.
Of which there are two, one for seniors only on July the 8th at 10 o'clock, and the second one is July 13th at 6:00 p.m. That'll be number seven.
All right, so all that having been said, we can move on to the Neighborhood Forum update. We did have the Neighborhood Forum last night here in the library. We had a significant turnout of residents in the neighborhood around the school. Mrs. Field was there. Mrs. Gagbiati was able to join us maybe halfway through the meeting. Mr. Skunova was there, as well as Mr. Lanziski. The three members of the Board of Selectmen were also there, as was the police chief. And I don't know if I mentioned, but we had 32 residents of Wardell, Hathaway Road, and some, some other neighbors from Williamson and Prospect Street. There were a broad range of concerns expressed, particularly by the residents on Hathaway and Wardell, about the parking situation there. I think it was a very productive meeting because the Board of Selectmen, the town adminis- I neglected to mention the town administrator was also present. And they're very much aware of that situation, and I believe, obviously, they weren't able to deliberate at that Neighborhood Forum, because it wasn't a formal meeting for them. It wasn't a formal meeting for our community either. We didn't, we didn't have a quorum. But the, the concerns that were expressed were significant, and the Selectmen pledged to work with us to establish some much more stringent parking limits on Wardell and Hathaway Road, and also to work with us to give us a parking easement on the south side of Luther Avenue, where students are parking at the end of the football stadium, and also on Prospect, on the east side of Prospect, where students are also parking, which will permit us to have greater control. That those areas are actually part of the street right of way, so if we have this easement, we'll have greater control there. And then there were also concerns expressed about foul balls from the baseball field and late-night music practices that are impacting on the neighborhood as well. So I'm going to address all of those things. The thing that I would request of the committee tonight is agreement to support the, a position of the committee to press for the parking restrictions on Wardell and Hathaway Road and the, and the parking easement. The parking easement will actually require a town meeting vote, I believe, because it's, it's actually a grant of an interest in real estate. But we can work on that and hopefully have a warrant article for the special town meeting in the late fall to deal with that situation. I think the, the most pressing issue is the parking on Wardell and Hathaway. And so I would, I would, the Selectmen are planning to address this at their meeting on July 12th, and I'd like to be able to go to the meeting with the committee's support to hopefully advocate for those kinds, those kinds of restrictions. The idea is to make the restrictions such that they don't really interfere with the neighbors' ability to park on the street, so that we're still kind of, we invited the neighbors to kind of get together and come up with suggestions for the Selectmen to act. Limiting the timeframe to, say, between 7:00 and 4:00 would allow residents to park on the street overnight. We're, we've also discussed the idea of all the residents having visitor, visitor passes or on-street parking passes so that they can park on the street during the hours that, where it's restricted, but students would not be able to park there. Parking is only part of the problem that our students' presence has created there in that neighborhood. So, is other, is there any, are there any questions?
Well, I, I do. I really don't think students should be parking on the street. We should have enough parking spaces for students.
We do.
We do.
Then, how can we solve that problem?
Parking passes. So, one of the things that came to light during the forum, and Chief McNeil was there, and I have to say, he did a phenomenal job addressing it. Before I get into the details to answer that question, Mrs. Tara, I will say that this was of what, the, the community members in attendance were extremely thankful to us, not only as a board, but as government officials in town, listening to their concerns about this. And I want to thank everybody publicly who participated, the Board of Selectmen, the Chief of Police, Mr. Brown, and Mr. Pierce, who was leading it. There has been, so by way of background, when we started the construction for the building, that's when the parking issues started to come to light for the neighbors. They, while there was construction, there was parking. Because there is no restriction when students park in the streets, they have a little bit more leniency with what they have in their cars, what they can do than if they were on school grounds. And that behavior, unfortunately, in these neighborhoods, has made it problematic. So it's not a matter of not having enough parking spots on school grounds. There is a lack of control on the school district's part for students that don't park on school grounds. So they aren't subjected to the same type of search and seizure that they would be on school grounds when they are on the streets. And that was reflected in some of the behavior that the community, the community members spoke of yesterday. So we are trying to come up with a solution that will make students understand that they need to be responsible neighbors and behave in a certain way appropriately in these neighborhoods that respects the property owners. And Chief McNeil got up and spoke about that as well, based on what we, they can do as a police department and what we can do as far as school administrators, depending on where they park.
So do we have any answer to that?
Mm-hmm. So the proposed, and again, this was taken, there was a, there was a vote taken, or a show of hands, I should say, in the room to say how many commu-, commu-, neighborhood people would be in favor of doing this, and it was unanimous, is that if there is a plan to have resident parking only in these neighborhoods that are affected during certain hours, and the Board of Selectmen asked the neighbors to go back and draft their own plan as to what they would find acceptable, that would push the students out of the neighborhoods and back onto the school grounds in addition to having additional parking if we do the easements on those areas that Mr. Pierce was referring to.
I think it's a, it's a solution to the problem. I'm not a big fan of having residential parking only, because people with, that live near churches have always complained, like when there's a feast, they can't park their car, because, you know, things like that. So I'm a little concerned about just that piece. But these are kids, and unfortunately, they should be behaving. We encourage them to behave. I just feel that the next thing you know is they're going to go across Route 6 now and park in those neighborhoods. You know, these are, there's a reason why these kids are not parked, they're not parking lots. And we, we know that, you know? Anyone who doesn't believe that, I just think we're just going to the next neighborhood and the next neighborhood. Unfortunately, I think, before you know it, we're going to have a very long block, residential parking area during the school hours, so. But I think it's, it's a start, let's see how it works. But I just feel that I, I don't believe that this is, but though, like Mr., when I spoke to Chief McNeil, he basically says that hands are tied. You can't just search a car that's not on a school property. Students know that. So unfortunately, I just think it's just going to another neighborhood. You know, we're just passing, and until we figure out how to address that issue, like why our children feel the need, so.
The neighbors were really very accommodating in the sense that they said they understand that there's going to be parking in the neighborhood for the graduation, for example, for significant events at the high school, for football games, and they don't have a problem with that. And that type of parking really doesn't create the kinds of issues that have been created by the student presence. And so what we're looking to do is to limit the restrictions as much as possible on the neighbors themselves, but strongly discourage students from parking there during, on the school day. So the restriction would probably be from 7:00 in the morning till 4:00 in the afternoon, only on school days, so that it wouldn't impact evening events at the school. It wouldn't impact weekend events. And as far as it pushing it out, I think there is a limit as to how far the students are willing to walk. And I think it may not, it may not dissuade every student from parking off-campus, but it will, the further out they're pushed, the fewer will park, and they'll have less, less impact on the neighborhood. The, the activities, you'll probably read about the gory details in The Spectator, because Mr. Austin was there hearing the detailed complaints. You know, involves speeding, causing safety concerns among the neighbors, other behaviors that are a real, and this is limited to, really limited to a small number of our students. I think the vast majority of our students are good citizens. But there has been a group that have been really disrespectful of that neighborhood. We really have to do everything we can to try to, try to be good neighbors as a high school community and try to address this as best we can.
Like I said, I just think it's the right move. It's just unfortunately, I have a feeling it's just going to pass it down, and we'll have to address it again. You know, we may have another group that's coming in and saying, you know what? Like you said, there will be that mild point that where parents, the kids are going to say no. But I mean, so I'm glad that they're going to, you know, bring a policy or a proposal to the town. My other piece that I, a parent did reach out to me after last meeting regarding the parking and how I'm against those fees. And, and this is maybe something that we may want to consider, because something about parents parking their car, I mean, kids pay a parking piece, but I guess they do do it at other schools, Portsmouth being one. But I guess the children are allowed to decorate their little parking space. Is that true, or someone mentioned that?
That was, that was something that they did.
So that, that's just, that may, so there you know you do park, you pay for that parking space, that's your parking space, and, you know, as long as they're not using paint or something. But I don't know how they do it, but, but it's just.
It becomes a nicer after a while. It's great when the kids, they, they personalize their parking spot. And at that school, everyone had a special spot. It wasn't first comes, first served. And not only would they purchase it, or pay a fee for that spot, but if they wanted to pay something extra, which was a donation that the senior class would run, they could paint their spot. And then every year, then they're going out with the black tar, and you know, they're resurfacing it for the next.
In that case, I, I, but I'm just, what I do support is, if you're paying for a parking space, you should have a parking space. So I, that's something that I would love to know if we're not overpaying, I mean, if we're not overselling parking spots. Now, kids may want to buy a parking pass early in the year, and then it may discourage them from parking out in the street because they know where they park every day. It's, it's there for them. So just as enough, I'm just looking at other options why some kids may park across the street, but if they're, if they have their own, if they don't have to look for a parking spot and they're up close, who knows? So.
One of my concerns I've brought up a couple of times is visitor parking. So if we have that banned from student parking, no one would know from a visitor versus a student during the school day. And this has happened numerous times, a visitor, elderly, disabled, now everyone has a handicap parking spot. It is unreasonable to have guests park in that furthest parking lot, and then from all the way here to the main entrance. We need more spots over here reserved for people. They pick up kids, they have young kids in the rain, winter, sliding. I've heard people slipping. We really need some visitor spots. It really should be reserved for mostly visitor spots over here.
That is a good point. I, 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 that is one thing that we would have to address with administration, is that for visitors, how, how would they be identified if we start including some of these parking restrictions? Because I know I've experienced that as well, is where, where will visitors be able to park? And will there be a plan in place for them?
We do have a plan for some of the spots over here, but we're also waiting for the, the building closeout before we make any changes.
Because parents that need to pick up their kids quick from the other side.
The official MSBA closeout.
Yeah. I have concerns about that, and I don't know what role the school committee has in it, but, you know, we have a, we have a certification, either a gold or a silver certification based upon, based upon the fact that we are encouraging carpooling and, you know, alternate energy cars. And I, I have a concern about moving away from that. But I, I, in fact, I'm a little disappointed that we haven't taken it more seriously and both as a committee and as an administration to offer those spots that are so identified to people who are carpooling or who have battery-powered cars, so.
Mr. Pierce, we just, we rarely need a spot to, just for people to pick up sick children right over here.
I agree with you wholeheartedly.
And it has happened for years.
I just am concerned that using, you know, removing the designated spots to encourage clean energy use and carpooling are, are going to be sacrificed for the sake of the visitor spots. And I understand, I, I understand the issue because every space that we remove in that parking lot means a faculty member has to park further away from the door. And I understand the pressures on the principal probably not to do that. But, you know, they need to assign those spots by age and good health or something.
I'm just going to go regarding faculty. We live, I live, I mean, I obviously, I work for a major corporation, a Fortune 500 company. Just for the record,
Just for the record, the CEO, I mean, well, not the, the president of our company, he parks wherever he gets there. He does not have an assigned parking spot. This is a man that probably is making way, you know, he runs a Fortune 500 company. He shows up and the VPs, everyone. I, who am a contractor, I have the very first parking spot because I get there at four thirty in the morning. So I'm just looking at it as, I don't think faculty should have any more right, and I, I can say that publicly, which I am, than any student who's paying for a parking spot. I personally think first come, first served. If we're not gonna assign students parking spots, I don't think we should be reserving any part of a lot, and I know some school districts do that, but I personally believe it's first come, first served for everyone or no one. I think visitors, but if you do come to our building, there are twenty visitors parking spots for surgeons and anyone else that comes into the building. So I think visitors would have a much bigger right than, you know, especially if it's a handicapped person coming in here or whatever, or even just an elderly person or just me coming into the building to go to the main office and drop off something, I should have a parking spot for visitors. So regardless of staff, if that's the reason why we don't wanna do this or we have reservations for, I'm sorry, I don't feel any, I, I just don't feel bad that if you wanna be close as a teacher, as a staff member, get into the building early. But it doesn't mean you can come in whatever time you want and expect to be having a parking spot ready for you. It's the same thing with the students. If you don't have, given them a signed seat, a, a signed parking spot, if they wanna be closer to the building, they arrive early. So that's my position on that whole piece, so.
Well, one thing I do wanna make clear is we do have handicap spaces, but not this one.
But this case that I, I've been in this situation myself and there's other families, they have little, small children, it's pouring rain or snow, they have to pick up their sick student in a mile down the road. That's not right because there's no spots or they're taking a risk going down a slippery hill because they have to park on the street or park next to the church.
Well, I'm, I'm not dis-
It's happening all the time.
I'm not disagreeing that we shouldn't have some visitor spaces designated. If it's just a pickup or drop off situation, we have a drop off area where uh parents can park, go to the door, pick up their child and, and leave. And uh as far as I know, you know, parking there for ten minutes or fifteen minutes is, is acceptable. Uh, what my pet peeve is, is that despite the fact that we have that drop off area, we have people who are parking right in front of the front door on, on this little circle, blocking the traffic from coming in off the street.
Cause that's the main office.
And among the offenders is the mailman.
It's cause it's the main office, Mr. Pierce. That's the thing. If you have to get your child, you gotta do the circle and come to the main office. It's not over there.
Drop off and pull up area right here.
You cannot leave that car parked to go on.
Are we covering this under the neighborhood forum update or is this a separate?
Well, it's about parking.
It's about park, it's a parking issue, I guess.
It's a parking.
But a bit of field, so. All right, so um we were talking about the neighborhood forum and I asked for a, a vote of the committee to support um our participation in um the selectance meeting and, and the effort to resolve the parking issues um on Hathaway and Wardell in the general neighborhood of, of the high school and also advocating for easements on Luther and Prospect Street.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion made by Mrs. Field, seconded by Mrs. Tara and Mr. Giliducci. Any further discussion? Absence of discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous. Thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Schoonover, approval of salaries of non-alien personnel.
Yes, uh, this list was shared with uh the Somerset uh School Committee last week. It's just showing you a listing of those employees who have individual contracts. They are not in any collective bargaining agreements. Uh, some of these have already been approved uh by the committee, but I just wanted to uh share with you uh what those FY18 salaries are and uh, uh, the percentages there reflect um what was in the, the approved budgets. With the exception of one, there's a slight increase uh over what was in the, the budget, but that will be um, uh, made up in another area in a, in a future, um, a, a salary not yet approved.
So Mr. Schoonover, the, the um, the difference, just to, just to clarify, the difference is already in our current budget that we have for the upcoming year?
Yes.
That's been approved, determined, approved, okay.
And all of the employees on the list are, uh, on this list are shared between the two districts at the sixty-five, thirty-five split with one exception, uh, Ms. Blackmar, because she is fifty percent treasurer for Somerset Berkeley and fifty percent HR for the two districts. So her salary, so fifty percent of her salary is automatically Somerset Berkeley and then of the remaining fifty percent, it's sixty-five Somerset, thirty-five Somerset Berkeley. Uh, so you can determine what Somerset Berkeley's uh amount is there, but again, it was also in a, in the FY18 budget documents.
All right, this is public information. As I understand, it's within the scope of your authority to make, uh, make these decisions as long as it's uh within the budgetary line item. So I appreciate this information.
Do you mean a vote or?
I don't believe we do.
No approval necessary?
No, the superintendent, uh, the superintendent has the authority to um make these decisions so long as it's within um the budget line item. We, we approve his salary, the Director of Business and Finance. I'm not sure if we approve the-
Well, you approve the, uh, the contracts of Director of Special Ed, Director of Business and Finance and Superintendent. Those are the contracts that the committee approves right when the, when the contracts, I guess, are initially made.
All right, well, if someone wants to make a motion to approve uh these, these salaries, I don't think it's out of order. Vote this more closely.
I'll make a motion to approve salaries presented by Superintendent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, motion made by Mrs. Tara and seconded by Mrs. Field. Any further discussion?
Mr. Pierce, um, I'd like to make an exception for the Superintendent and Mrs. Albinaz because we have already approved that one item.
Okay, so the scope of the motion doesn't include the Superintendent and the um Director of Business and Finance. Is that correct, Mrs. Tara?
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? Any absence of discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous. The next item, I'd like to defer until after our executive session. So under Budget and Finance, consider athletic field advertising. This is Albinaz.
So this is kind of a, uh, I wanna take the school committee's temperature as far as an interest in allowing um for some advertising to be installed in the specific athletic field areas, softball field, baseball field and the turf field fence. Uh, Mr. Francis, our athletic director and I have walked around the campus to determine where the best placements would be for the potential to sell advertising space for uh local vendors or anyone interested in um supplementing the athletic program's budget uh by doing advertising. So um, as you can see, this just, just is a, a scope of what we're looking at. Obviously, this would be um something we would be sending to local, local vendors. I would like to see if the school committee is interested in just even going forward with this because if we were, then I would send postcards out to local vendors showcasing what we're going to be offering, seeing if there's a level of interest. If there isn't, then we wouldn't move forward with that. But um before I invest a small portion of funds into doing some sort of postcards, I would like to see if the school committee wants to move forward with this.
I've seen uh this type of advertising at other high schools when I've been there, primarily for football games, um, but um, so I don't, I think it's something that's being done in other communities. I think um we need uh on a future agenda to talk about um planning for um the re- the replacement of the turf field, which is several years down the line, but will be a significant expense and I think we should be thinking about putting money aside for that. And this, uh, obviously it'll be up to the committee as to how this money is expended, but um I think that this would be a way to create a fund that uh we could set aside for that, for that purpose. We need, we need to um get an informed opinion as to what the potential replacement cost is and at what point in the future we might be incurring that cost and try to plan how we'd be able to pay for that. It would be very, very difficult to um absorb that cost in our budget in a single year. So I think it's something we really do need to plan for. So I, I'm certainly open to the idea, uh, and fortunately you've said in here that we have control of the content, so.
Mr. Chair, I, I, I support this as well. The only thing that I would like to see is, would it be possible to um do what like some local towns have done, like if you go to Newport, everyone's sign is based, like you can't have, even like a McDonald's can't have the big arches. They have to have like their, the, that type of sign. I just would hate to see all different colors all over the field. If it would be possible to, you know, stay with the blue and the white model like uh Newport, I think they do brown and white or whatever it is these days. I would like to see something, if that would be possible.
Well, we can't, I mean, I'm open to the conversation, but you're essentially restricting the logo of the local business if you do, if you force certain color.
But I, it's very successful in some communities. I think we should, uh, I, I'm just looking, wear blue and white in this district. I would hate to see um a visiting team like that wears red and most of our advertisement is all in red and now it looks more of a home game for them than us. That's, that's my only, I would prefer to stay somewhat of our Somerset, I mean, from Somerset Berkeley colors and um-
Maybe perhaps like the border of the banner.
Just, you know, just something.
Something.
Yeah, just in general, you do go to athletic events, like Kentucky Fried Chicken, which is rather, we have a little advertising, blue, the logo is blue, so.
I would say just maybe the border.
I'm sure Duncan Donner is with you on that.
I believe that they do this on the um fields at the South Complex, don't they?
Yes.
So we could take a look at what they're doing there. I believe, I believe they do it at Deitner Rehoboth. I believe when I've been to football games there, they, they have some advertising.
We did it at the old high school. We used to do it around the football field at the old high school. They used to paint the things on, people would buy them and we'd put them up on the fences in the old high school. Did that quite a bit.
I can appreciate um, you know, the aesthetics of it, um, but I do wonder because logos are so visually recognized, if we do go forward with this, we may want to ask potential sponsors, you know, would it change your mind if we kept you to a certain color code um to do that? Because I do know, working with logos, that, that is such a visual recognition for, for companies that, and, and color goes into a part of that. Um, I know you tou- you touched upon it, Mr. Pierce, but my question was going to be, had there been any thought given to what these funds would be contributed to? But I think what I'm hearing right now is that this is really just to move forward with the concept to see if we can generate interest and then the school committee will have the authority to decide where the funding goes. Has there been any dialogue or does there need to be any dialogue with the Boosters Group regarding subsequent fundraising that's going on? I just wonder from a, if, as we look at fundraising overall, um, is there a general plan for that? Um, this is probably just something separate, just a, a one-off, I'm doing advertising, but I just wonder if this type of fundraising and advertising doesn't dovetail into other efforts that are being done at the school level, specifically mainly with the Boosters because we have Boosters support the athletics.
They would continue to do their booklets that they currently are in charge of doing as far as that advertising space, so we're not looking to infringe on that.
Right.
As far as, that's a large fundraising source for them, so um, I don't, I haven't had any sort of conversations with Mr. Francis about stopping that for them.
Right.
This would just be in addition to, it would be kind of like our own fundraising.
Right.
For a one solution. But I, to answer your question, I haven't had any, myself personally, I haven't had any questions or conversations with the Boosters Group as far as what their fundraising is gonna be for next year.
So the only reason I, I say that in, in, it, it may be, it may warrant a conversation, just a quick conversation with them because if two groups are going to the same company with asks for, for donations or money or sponsorship, there may just wanna be some cohesive message because the person who's receiving that might say, well, I've already given to the Boosters or I, I don't understand where the tie-in is, maybe just to coordinate efforts.
Sure.
And it may be something that, there may be a way to actually leverage more support from a, from a, from a company as well. If we're gonna do signs, maybe there's something else that they might be able to do. Boosters might turn around and say, well, you can do a sign and also X amount for, for Boosters. It just, they just might have some ideas on collaborating on.
I can now reach out to our athletic director and see what his, uh, he's kind of the go-between as to who's concerned. Um, so I'll see if we can set up a meeting with him.
It would get, I understand all the challenges because now you're going to have funds that are going for the Boosters and then funds that we're looking to have come directly to the school for some, for some other reason, so.
Can I just add that I think this is an excellent idea. I also like Mr. Pierce's idea of using it for possibly future funds for turf field, so thank you. I think this is great. I also am listening to Mr. Machado. I think maybe looking at something that maybe it's all on a blue background or a border, I think that would work out as well if you could do that. But again, I wanna, wanna limit the sponsorship logo, so. I just think it's great. When I saw it, I was like, ooh, this is wonderful, so, awesome.
So I will start working on doing a promotional postcard for vendors and um-
Okay, so um, next item is fiscal year two thousand seventeen budget status.
So our FY17 budget as it stands today, um, and I don't know how in detail you want me to go as far as this agenda item is, uh, we're projecting a ten thousand dollar surplus in the FY17 operating budget. There's a lot of things that we had to forego, uh, custodial positions we did not fill, and depending on how the Berkeley vote goes, we'll have to revisit that, uh, but it was a group effort. Everyone kind of stuck to their guns, wrong phrase, stuck to their, you know, you know, everyone was, including the coordinators, they kind of understood the, the bigger problem here. Sorry, you gave them one credit.
All right, well, I'm glad to hear that we're able to accomplish that, so I think uh that's probably sufficient to cover that item. Any, any other discussion?
Um, just one point. It's something that came up and, and I don't think we should make a decision now, um, just because Mrs. Gabry already is out here, but Dean, I know you represent the regional subcommittee, I believe. Um, but it's something that we talked about, maybe we could talk about it at the next meeting about potentially um hiring a consultant to help with the formula development for regionalization. Um, that was tabled at an earlier meeting because of the uncertainty that was happening in Berkeley. There was uncertainty around where the budget was going to come out for this year, so I would just make an ask if that's something that we could possibly revisit at the next uh school committee meeting for consideration.
Yeah, because by that point in time, the Berkeley override vote would be completed.
Yep.
I will assume that you want to encumber those funds. They need to be encumbered by June thirtieth, so I will go ahead and assume that the proposal that Julie presented during this for that consulting work is going to happen because we need to make a decision by June thirtieth if we're going to encumber those funds. We can always cancel it after, but I'm just gonna assume that that's-
It can be canceled if-
We can cancel it, yeah. So I'll just- We can cancel it, yeah. So I'll just, I'll assume we're going to encumber those funds out of this year's budget.
So I have a question. We, we just instituted user fees, but we have money for consultants and other things.
What was the case for this?
I don't know. So I'm just wondering, before we spend money on other things, shouldn't we look at that? I mean, I always felt the user fees had nothing to do with budget. It's kind of proven to me, right? So if we, before we can pay all these extra fees, why are we going to charge families? I would never agree to a consultant or anything extra until that's considered that we're going to bring back to the families.
So, so two separate things. The consultant was something that this, this school committee had been discussing and having dialogue around for this budget year. So I just wanted to bring it to the attention because we were holding off on moving forward. We specifically voted on not moving forward because of the, the uncertainty around how we were going to end for this fiscal year budget and where the Berkeley situation. The user fees for budgets starting for this year going forward is to help have that additional revenue stream to help support the athletic and the extracurricular programs going forward, knowing that the towns in both Berkeley and Somerset down the road are going to be experiencing financial difficulties. Berkeley's what they're recognizing right now, Somerset in the coming years with the, with the closing of the power plant. So the user fees was a mechanism to be proactive to help offset the expenses in those line items as we prepare for the challenges that were going to be.
So we're not going to have a consultant next year?
No, no. Oh, I'm sorry. So the, that's right. We had the dialogue before you guys came on board. So that's why I asked if we could have another meeting. So the regional subcommittee had made a proposal. And Dee, why don't you speak to it? Cause you, cause you sit on the regional subcommittee about the proposal work.
We had made a proposal to hire a consultant to review the work that we had done to date because the, the work that had been done by the regional planning board had resulted in a number of different outcomes as far as the financial implications of full regionalization. We couldn't get a single model to boil down to a data point that we were comfortable enough to present to the different communities. So we reached out to a number of different consultants for proposals and we got a very reasonable one from, from Mr. Hatch. And Mr. Hatch had agreed to go through the work we had done and accomplish a number of other things for us as well for a very nominal fee.
And it's for this year's budget, in which we have a surplus.
Correct.
So next year, we will see these things on the table since we have user fees and we're in dire straits. So I mean, that's fine. I can approve things this year since we have a surplus.
Well, we, we understand your position on user fees, Mrs. Terra. To say that there won't, there won't be any special appropriation presented to the committee next year, I think is asking too much, you know, asking us to have a perfect foresight. But I, we're, we're only looking to encumber this $1,750 at this point. And we, we can debate at our next meeting whether we should expend the money. But at least this doesn't foreclose us from coming to agreement. Mr. Machado serves on that committee as well. So he's, he's familiar with the issue, the consultant.
If I remember correctly, we'd have to take a look at the minutes because I don't have them in front of me. But I believe we went with a little higher number, with 2,000 or 20, 200, not to exceed because of.
Because there was some traveling.
Yeah, travel expenses that weren't included within the, so we'd want to encumber the amount to match the original proposed by the state.
All right. So why don't, why don't we have a motion to encumber $2,500 without a commitment to expend that money to be revisited at our next meeting?
Second.
Sorry. Is that Mr. Machado?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Machado and seconded by Mr. Larabee. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. Does anyone have any questions on the monthly invoices that were provided? The scheduled monthly invoices that was provided? Okay. The next item under unfinished business is approval of the 2017, 2018 handbook. I believe we'll have to defer that to our next meeting because we have certain items that are going to be voted on at our next meeting.
Mr. Skunova?
Yes.
Does that present any problems to the administration that the handbook being delayed?
Because it's not being printed this year. It does not.
Thank you.
Next item is summer retreat agenda. And I ask that that be put on the agenda because I believe that we have a consensus date or the best possible date for the most people to attend. And is it August 5th?
Mm-hmm.
August 5th. So we need to, to plan our agenda. And we also, we need to see if anyone is willing to volunteer to kind of plan the agenda with input from the members of the committee. Obviously, it has to be done over them before our next meeting because we'll only have a week or so after our next meeting. So does anyone have any thoughts or about items that they would like to see on the agenda for our retreat?
I unfortunately did have a few, but unfortunately, I'm in a gunk with Maine that week. So I will not be present. Basically, the only thing that I would like us to, well, I was hoping to be there, but really was to discuss what exactly are the roles and responsibilities of the school committee, just a refresher. But unfortunately, I won't be there.
So we're going to be at a summer retreat and you're the unfortunate one in the gunk with Maine?
I take that back. I take that back. I can bear that.
Since I've worked on these in the past, I've had initial conversations with Mrs. Gagriardi too. I'm happy to be the liaison or help manage the agenda. If so, if anybody has suggestions, you can bring it through Mr. Pierce and then pass that to us. And then I can converse with Mrs. Gagriardi as well. And then we can present a draft agenda at our next meeting for discussion.
Well, we're going to have to give you some, some latitude in planning that along with the superintendent because we're really not going to be able to make any significant changes to the agenda at our next meeting. Mr. Giliducci indicated that there is a Berkeley school committee meeting on the same night as our July school committee meeting for the purposes, purpose of doing the superintendent evaluation. He's going to check to see if there's any ability to move their date by a day or so. If not, then you may have to consider moving our date. So again, we'll send out a due little poll to see if we can do it the day before perhaps. But we'll wait till we hear from the Berkeley school committee on that. Okay.
If I remember correctly, I think that date was chosen because it was the one that worked for the most people. So we may want to, is the Wednesday work for everyone here?
If it's possible, we'll post a check. My schedule is pretty much open in the July.
That's fine.
What's, what's July?
26.
The original was the 26?
It was the 27.
It was the 27.
So we're just moving to the Wednesday?
Actually, the Wednesday works better for me. The 27th wasn't going to be able to work for me. I can do the 26th.
Chris?
26, fine.
Okay. All right. And we'll, we'll change the date of our next meeting to Wednesday, the 26th of July. So the next item we have under informational items is Students of the Month. And so for the month of May, we have Juliette Boulud in music, Joanna Bernaba in French I, Jacob Biello in English II, Caleb Panos in Introduction to Computer Drafting and Design, Madeline Johnson in Wellness, Josie Martin in Math, Algebra II, Abigail Montag, AP Modern American History, Patrick O'Neill, Advanced Drawing, and Guy Patnau III in Hospitality and Tourism, and Erin Reposa in Chemistry. And Students of the Month for June, Lucas Hamel, Physical Education, Cara Canus, Business Marketing, DECA, Mark Manning, English Language Arts, Alexis Melvin, Art Foundations, Alex Malhar, World Languages, Gillian Olivera, Math, Elizabeth Orlando, Music Orchestra, Eric Rogers, Social Studies, Molly Sullivan, Introductory Physics, and Casey Woodward, Graphic Engineering I. Congratulations to all those students being chosen as Students of the Month. Next item is Massachusetts Association of School Committees' Joint Conference, November 1 through 4. It's a little earlier this year than it usually is. But the reason I asked it to be put on the agenda is because the registration fee is discounted through the end of June. So I was hoping to get an indication from those who feel that they're going to attend. If, if, if it's questionable, then I just assume not register you. I don't think it's, I don't think it's reimbursable. But I know that I plan to attend. Mr. Giliducci always attends. He's a life member of the association. So if anyone else is aware, because I would like Robin to at least register those who know that they're planning on attending. It is, it is a civic, significant commitment, particularly those who are gain, for those who are gainfully employed. I have the luxury of a very flexible schedule, so, but it's a three or four day event. So it is a major commitment.
I plan on going for KE. So maybe not the entire thing. We might split like we've done before.
All right. So if, if anyone else wants to think about it, and I'll mention it to Mrs. Gagriardi because she has been in the past, although her schedule has become much more, much less flexible than it used to be. So I'm not sure whether she'll be able to make the time commitment this year. But we should check, why don't you check with her, Robin, and, and register myself and Mr. Giliducci if you would please? Before we, before we go to quick updates from Somerset and Berkeley, I just wanted to mention two other things we, which aren't on the agenda, but I'll risk it since they're any informational items. One is that we had the ribbon cutting for the solar installation this afternoon at 5:00. We had, in addition to the superintendent and the director of business and finance and the facilities director, Mrs. Field was there, I was there. We had David Barabee from the Somerset Selectmen and Gil Pont from the Berkeley Selectmen. Did I miss any other dignitaries? And, and we also had Matt Shortle who represented Select and Walter Gray who was representing Power Options. Those are the two entities that collaborated in working with us to provide this solar array on our roof. And I think it's a very positive thing for the district. It is fully installed, ready to go. We're waiting on the final word from National Grid to actually be able to throw the switch, but that should happen literally within the next several days. So at that point, we'll be receiving the benefit of the system. The thing I'd like the general public to know is that this installation did not cost the district, taxpayers of Somerset, or Berkeley, anything at all, aside from perhaps a little bit of manpower that the district used to coordinate. The actual installation, Mr. Campos was involved, Mrs. Albinaz was involved. Obviously, their time is of value, but in terms of any actual out-of-pocket, direct out-of-pocket expense, there was none. And we'll enjoy the benefit presumably for the next 20 years in terms of savings on our energy. So I think, I think it was very positive and hopefully we'll get some positive coverage from both the Herald News and the Spectator who were both present. So I don't know if there are any questions about that. If not, I was going to ask the superintendent, maybe you could introduce our students or describe the change that has occurred with respect to recording our meetings and just introduce our students.
Okay. So as everyone knows, we have a TV production studio that was brand new to the high school this past year. We have two of our students who participated in the first year of that. And I think we'll just be, will you be taking turns coming to our meetings? Is that what the, what the plan is?
Yeah.
All right. So Chase and Len, Lennewett?
Lennewett.
Okay. And Julia Powers. Chase is going to her senior year. Julia's going to her sophomore year. They will be filling our meetings from now on. So.
Thank you so much.
Welcome to them.
And so it's an example of our TV studio in action. We also, we also, just for, again, for informational purposes, received an email from the superintendent with some of the promotional videos that have been produced in our TV studio. I've had the opportunity to watch two or three of them. Obviously, look at all the rest, but I was very impressed with the quality of the production and the presentations that were done by the students who appeared in the promotional videos. And I'm hoping that in addition to having those on our website at some point in the near future, that we'll take advantage of perhaps using those at the middle schools in both Somerset and Berkeley to promote Somerset Berkeley Regional High School.
We will. All right. And I do encourage not just the school committee, but the public. So if you go to YouTube and find the Blue Raider Studios channel, you can find many, you know, not just those promotional videos, but other products that our students have created. And they're, they're posted there. So it's just really great to see. You could also see some athletic events, some music events. So lots of good entertainment that our kids have produced that you can find right there on YouTube.
Do we have an update on the installation of the playback system as yet? Because I'm really troubled by the fact that there does not appear to be any audio on Channel 98 or the other educational, I think Channel 9.
Yes. I will check with SATV and find out what's happening with that.
Because presumably, once that happens, we'll be able to have these, these things up on Channel 98 rather than having to just rely on YouTube.
Yes.
So trying to move along as fast as we can here. Do we have a quick update from the Somerset Cave District?
Sure. We had a meeting last week, as Mr. Skunova mentioned. We, it was a, it was a happy occasion because we had a few of our retired teachers. We presented citations to at least three of our teachers and, well, a teacher as a custodian and also a paraprofessional. But in, in total, we had six citations given to our retirees. And we also gave a citation to Stuart Murray for his years on the school committee. The Maurice Foundation also appeared in us. One of the, we also had two Scholar Leader Award winners, William Burnell and Catherine Cochrane. And one that I, she wasn't able to make it, but the teacher was there. that I, she wasn't able to make it, but the teacher was there, Parker Sawesby. Uh, she won the Safe Groups to School Concert, Contest, which are, uh, basically it was a drawing that she did that, um, you know, promotes school safety for busing. And, um, what I am very proud, and we should all be proud, her signs will be all over the state of Massachusetts, correct?
Yes.
Uh, we will be having one in, um, North, I believe, in our administration. So later on you, if, I mean, whenever you're driving by Whitestone, um, look for that sign, uh, once it's up. Uh, we, you know, we, this is something that I definitely think we should share. Um, Ms. Haskell, our Curriculum Director, she out of the wind just applied for a $30,000 grant for any level three and four schools for, um, for their summer workshop. They're, she's using that fund for her summer workshop, but, um, she actually was granted this, uh, $30,000 grant because she figured, why not apply for it? Even though we're a level two school, um, her case was, um, really outstanding that they actually granted us that $30,000. Uh, all of our handbooks were approved. Um, we did approve, uh, we joined the, the region by approving Mrs. Albinaz's contract. And, um, we had, uh, we too also had a $48,000 surplus. $18,000 of it was for, for the homeless transportation that we had on our budget. That would be returned right back to the town. And we have an additional $30,000, which we still have some odds and ends that we need to, um, comp, uh, to figure out. And, um, and we also have capital, uh, project updates. But that's basically, um, a quick report.
Okay. Thank you. And from Berkeley?
For Cave 4, um, Student of the Month brunches were held in May and June. The students made beautiful pennants representing qualities that made them Students of the Month. Capital Superior staff outdone themselves this year with themed decorations to greet the guests each month. Their extra efforts in all areas this year are appreciated. The concert season has been in full gear with all grades giving performances that highlight their learning in music class throughout the school year. The shows have been truly magnificent, and that's due to Mrs. Reynolds, who's the music teacher at the community school. In May, on May 19th, Mrs. Ann Young, one of our kindergarten teachers, was honored by the Taunton Area Chamber of Commerce for excellence in teaching. The event took place at a brunch at the Stone Forge Tavern in Rainham. That's the one right next to Walmart. Very nice place. Um, the grade four students stepped up to the Berkeley Middle School for a tour of the building and a question and answer session with Mrs. Hebert, the principal, and Mr. Welch, the assistant principal. Additionally, Mrs. Hebert visited the Berkeley Community School, fourth graders in their individual classrooms to field questions and concerns about the transition to the middle school. And a parent information session was also held. And on the 20th of June, there's a, there will be a transition event from 6:30 to 7:15 for students in preschool and kindergarten. This event is co-sponsored by the Berkeley Community School and the Freetown Lakeville Berkeley Coordinated Family and Community Engagement Council. The event will feature musical fun with Toe Jam Puppet Band. This is a great family event to celebrate transition from our early childhood students. And before the end of the school year, assemblies will be held in each grade level to review the procedures for the summer reading challenge. In its sixth year, the challenge encourages the Berkeley Community School students to commit to reading over the summer in order to continue their progress in this important curricular area. This year, fourth grade students will assist the reading clinic staff in leading the presentation. Thanks to the staff of the reading clinic for organizing this important initiative. Dean's got the middle.
On the middle school, uh, we had graduation on, uh, Tuesday, 9th to 20th. Uh, that was a, I always enjoyed that. It's always a very fun event. Uh, we had, uh, 50 out of 100 of our graduating eighth grades, uh, students who earned the president's educational awards. So that was also very good to see. A couple of year end events that took place as well was the annual awards ceremony and Eagle Day, which took place on, uh, Tuesday the 13th. Those are always big events in, uh, in the middle school. Uh, my daughter loves all those events, you know, quite a bit. Graduation will mean a lot more to her next year since we graduated. Um, the budget situation in Berkeley continues to be fluid. Um, as everyone knows, the, uh, the prof two and a half override was successful. A town meeting on June the 5th. As Mr. Pierce had indicated, there's, uh, a special election to be held on, um, Saturday, July the 15th. Um, the, uh, the town clerk has absentee ballots available for folks who are, uh, interested in participating in the election. Uh, if you go to the town of Berkeley website, there are instructions on how to, uh, how to obtain a absentee ballot rate there. The election will be held at the middle school, uh, I'm sorry, at the elementary school, uh, from 10 to 6 on Saturday, July the 15th. I know it's a busy time for a lot of folks. Not everybody's going to be around on that Saturday. So that's why absentee ballots are available. Um, and, uh, as I mentioned earlier, there are two more public forums, one for seniors only at our Council on Aging, and a second public forum on Thursday, July the 13th at 6:00 PM. Um, if anyone still is interested in information regarding the need for the override and has any questions before they cast their ballot, um, it's an opportunity to, uh, come out and, uh, and see us. Uh, Mr. Skunova and Mr. Pierce are usually in attendance, as is Mrs. Albinaz. So it's really a great opportunity to, uh, get any of your last minute questions answered.
Okay. Thank you. I would, I would just like to add to that so that people, uh, again, who might be watching this meeting, that Massachusetts has really relaxed its rules on absentee voting. So you really don't need to have a, uh, what were the traditional reasons for obtaining an absentee ballot. You can just go into the town clerk's office, request it, and vote. Uh, so people who want to participate in the Berkeley special election, um, should, should feel, um, at ease in simply going into the clerk's office requesting the absentee ballot and voting. It's the best, uh, I think, uh, thing to do, even if people, uh, plan to vote on Saturday, the 15th. Uh, things come up on Saturdays in the summer that prevent you from getting there. So, um, it's, uh, it's an option that's available to everyone regardless of how they intend to vote. And I encourage everybody to take advantage of it.
I'll second that, Mr. Pierce, because Marge and I have already voted. Okay? And it's very easy. It's very simple. All you do is draw your little ballot, put it in the envelope, and it'll be opened on the 15th.
Okay. So moving on to our acceptance of minutes, um, I will entertain a motion to accept joint open session minutes of May 25th, 2017.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Terra and seconded by Mr. Larabee. Is there any discussion? In the absence of discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next, I will entertain a motion to accept the joint executive session minutes of May 25th, 2017.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Terra, seconded by Mr. Larabee and Mrs. Field. Is there any discussion? In the absence of discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next is to, I will entertain a motion to accept the open session minutes of June 1st, 2017.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Terra and seconded by Mr. Larabee. Is there any discussion? In the absence of discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next is to consider acceptance of executive session minutes of June 1, 2017.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Terra and seconded by Mr. Larabee. Any discussion? In the absence of discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Uh, the one item that we didn't cover on the agenda is to authorize to chair the executive, execute public employee committee agreement. I don't think it's necessary for us to, um, discuss that in open session. Uh, it is on the agenda for our executive session. So, um, at this time, I will entertain a motion pursuant to Massachusetts General laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Somerset Teachers Association, Units A and B, and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Carceral, and Custodian Units, and the status of negotiations with the Public Employee Committee if, uh, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the regional school committee. And I so declare, the committee will not return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session. May I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Terra and seconded by Mr. Larabee. Roll call, Mr. Giliducci?
Aye.
Mrs. Field?
Aye.
Mr. Larabee?
Aye.
Mrs. Terra?
Aye.
Mr. Machado?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, everyone, for coming.